Conyers, the Vice Chair of the Norfolk Redeveloping Housing Authority. And today I'm serving as the active chair. Before this meeting, we want to highlight a few changes that we have for the Board of Commissioners. So after over a decade of service, our Chair, Alfonso Albert, his term has concluded. And he's definitely been a tremendous impact to this board and community. And we just want to take a moment and just say thank you for the service that he's done for us. And we really appreciate the leadership and being a valued board member. So thank you, Alfonso, if you're listening. His term is concluded as of last month, and we just want to just take a moment to say thank you.
Absolutely.
Very well said.
Second, we also want to welcome a new Board of Commissioner. His name is Richard Grover. Richard unfortunately can't be here due to circumstances or dates that he's already had before this. So he'll be meeting with us on our next meeting, correct? Yep, so Richard, we welcome you, and we look forward to you being a part of this wonderful Board of Commissioners. Fellow Commissioners, per our bylaws and our governance, we have an elections that we need to do. So at this moment, I would like to just get some feedback for elected positions and see what everyone wants to do in regards to that. Do we want to take a vote today? Or is this something that we're looking to plan and do at a later date? So I'll just open the floor up for comments.
Chair, can I just comment on that?
Yes, sir.
We've, if you look at the bylaws, they require us to, each fiscal year, to elect new officers. I would say during the course of my tenure, that has not been something that's been observed. I would say that we are at an inflection point with leadership transition, and it's time to do that. I do think that it would be worthwhile to take a bit of a deliberative approach to that. And that is, given that we have a new board member who isn't here, that it would be worthwhile to, over the course of the next month, for individuals who have an interest in assuming one of the roles in leadership, to, you know, to consider the commitments that they're talking about and be able then to either offline speak with their colleagues and/or we take time at the next meeting to take nominations, to listen to the individuals who have an interest in serving in these roles, what they are going to bring to the table, and that at a point after we've taken that deliberative time, period of time, that their vote be held next month. Any other comments?
I'd like to say I agree with that assessment. I also would like to make certain that we have all members in place and onboard before we move forward. I like the idea that we have in the past always functioned and worked together as a board. And so the totality of that makes a great deal of sense, that we make this decision well-informed with everybody in place and onboard.
Okay, any oppositions to that?
I have a question. What does that look like? Does that look like we meet on November 6th and have speeches or whatever from whoever's planning on running? I guess if we're going to run it like an election, is that what we're doing? Rather than, you know, nominations from the board, I think is, I'm not sure what the process has been in the past. I haven't been here long enough, but...
Well, just to be clear, to answer your question, that's part of the problem. We haven't had an election in a while. And it, I mean, you raise a very good point. What's the machinery look like? And what I would say is, for those of you here who have an interest in it, I think we all have the ability to communicate, that that interest can be articulated, and it can be, we can have discussions. But if you're interested, then you better let people know about it. And I think that we can be prepared to make nominations next time based on those discussions and act on it. So, I mean, well, you're asking the right question. What does the machinery look like? We don't know, because we haven't done it.
Well, what did it do? It was even, I assume some of us were here at least when Terryon was elected Vice Chair, correct?
Yeah, I was nominated.
What, it was just a nomination?
Yeah, it was just a nomination.
Acclamation more.
There was no, there was no general?
Right.
A nomination and a vote. And the vote went forth.
I'm not, you know, for me, nominating a chair is more about, yeah, leader. Certainly to the idea that we can, that we can have that discussion or address those issues then. Not in December or when...
I agree as well. All right, no other comments?
Do we need a motion to move that forward?
We do not.
Okay.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to motion, I'd like to go forward with a motion to approve the minutes for last month's meeting. Can we go ahead with that, Delphine?
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we have two sets of minutes. If we could please vote on them separately. We'll take the September 11th, 2025 meeting minutes first. If you don't mind, we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, on this one, since we do have a quorum, and I have no problem with the minutes, and I left my glasses in my car, while you guys are voting, may I run and get the glasses?
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much. I don't think you need a hall pass for that one.
September 11th minutes, I move that we approve them as printed.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Oh, you'll take it.
Look, hold it all. Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
All right, properly moving to second. You already called the roll. Any of the second, for the second set of, for the second set of minutes, can we have a motion for that?
The previous was September 11th. Now which?
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
All right, can we get a motion for the second set of minutes?
I still move.
Can we get a second? Properly moving to second. Ms. Carnes, can you call the roll?
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
This is an opportunity for us to hear from the general public with public comments. Ms. Cruz, do we have any speakers for today?
I will check, I will check the chat online.
Really?
Now, listen, what's that mean? I've been doing better than I think, and I'm not getting any, making any progress. Wow.
Wow, okay, that's awesome. Things are going well. That's great to hear. At this moment, we can go ahead and move into new business if we don't have anything else. I think we have Steve up first with our new business. Good morning, Steve.
This is one of those mornings I come before the board to ask for money. And also to ask, to ask for money in a strange way. So the first item that I have before the board is we are looking for authorization for approving an issuance of up to $9 million in multifamily housing revenue bonds for the Broad Creek development. Just real quick, the Broad Creek development, this is phase one for the rehabilitation, rehab of the, of the former Hope 6 project of Broad Creek. This is 88 units. There will be three phases total. The board has taken action on this, on this project in the, in the recent past. Back in March, you approved the RAD slash Section 18 conversion for the project. And in the past, prior to that, we had actually attempted to do just a Section 18 conversion. Ultimately, the project will convert the property from public housing to project-based Section 8. And they're going to be doing a Lytec renovation as part of the project. As for the financing, in order to get to close, they are looking to use NRHA bonds, multifamily housing revenue bonds. And we have put an up to amount of $9 million. The board will see this item again when we get closer to close for the absolute approval of the final bond amount. And also, once the board acts here, it will also go to city council for their approval. Also, with the other two phases, those two phases will also come back, come to the board for their entire process. And that would be for any entities that the authority creates to be part of those deals, for any financing that, as part of those deals, as well as the RAD, Section 18 conversion.
Steve, we have Ann Curtis Saunders, who is participating virtually and is available. She is bond counsel, and if anybody has any questions or comments, otherwise we need to officially open a public hearing specifically on the bonds. So if any members of the public wish to make a comment or ask a question specifically with regard to the bond issuance for Broad Creek, it is 9:18, and the public hearing is open.
Radu, can we check online the chat to see if there are any comments on the bonds, please?
How long does that have to remain open, Delphine?
Just a minute or two, depending on whether anyone has expressed interest online or in the room. We do not have any comments on the bonds.
At this time.
Okay.
All right, do we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Can I just comment, this and the other ones, the other consideration, or the other issues that are under consideration this morning, were all discussed in more detail at the Finance Committee meeting. We didn't have any other questions, and at this point, we recommended the board approving this and the other, other issues that are going to be discussed.
Okay, yeah, we also met from the Developers Committee as well, too. And we didn't have any issues or concerns with this, correct, Earl?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to, I'd like someone to go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Properly moving to second. Ms. Carnes, can you call the roll?
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Casagrande?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
All abstained.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll move that item to council. Second item up is, again, we have a bond issued before the board. This is coming from Brynshawr as part of the Tidewater CNI development. They are looking to assemble the financing for Phase 4, which they've broken up into three separate projects. This is known, better known right now as TWGB2. It's 101 units. 46 are CNI replacement units. That is that they're going to be project-based Section 8 assistance. They are, they are coming to the board specifically for the bonds as they've been dealing with issues with Virginia Housing, who has changed some underwriting rules and has, in essence, as a result of those, those changes, has created gaps in their financing. And so part of their strategy is to come to NRHA for our bonds. If the underwriting rules at Virginia Housing don't change, they'll stay with our bonds. Otherwise, they are looking still to use Virginia Housing bonds. But at this time, they are coming to the board for NRHA multifamily bonds. The amount is up to $20 million. As noted, it's for 101 units. 46 are the CNI replacement units. Their intention is to close and get under construction in '26 so that they can begin lease up in late '27. Again, this is an item we brought to the Finance Committee, the Development Committee, as well as actually the Housing and Public Safety Committee.
Can we get a motion to approve this $20 million?
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, okay.
We need to open the public hearing. It is 9:21, and we'll open the public hearing and also check online to see if there are any comments or questions in the chat.
The chat section.
So without any questions or comments, can we get a motion to approve?
I still move, Mr. Chair.
Properly moving to second. Can we get a roll?
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Casagrande?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is we have a, looking for a resolution to authorize NRHA to submit for city, for city funding. Each year, NRHA applies to the city for basically three, three types of funding. Capital improvement funds for various development projects, general funds for general, for support of the authority in the work we do, and then CDVG slash home funds for our homeownership programs. By state law, we're required to get a resolution before our submittal. Again, this is the, for the board, this is the ask. This isn't an approval, you know, this isn't an approval by the city. This is just, we need the, the resolution from the board so that we can submit our, our ask to the city for the funding. What we put in the packet is, this year, we are requesting $4.7 million. And that is $1.9 million in city capital improvement program. And that is for the, the transformation of public housing communities, primarily the, the Young Terrace and Calvert Square project that we're currently working on, as well as we're looking for $420,000 for strengthening Norfolk neighborhoods. That is a down payment and closing cost assistance program that are specific to neighborhoods, Ingleside and in the Ward's Corner area, the Oakdale Farms area. Those funds are used for families that make 80 to 120% of their immediate income, and that program runs through our HomeNet office. We are also requesting general funds in the amount of $1 million for general program management, $200,000 for disposition of our land inventory. And primarily, that money is used for cutting grass, picking up trash, taking care of the vacant lot inventory that we have across the city, as well as another $133,000 for the Monroe Building rent. That was a project that we did a number of years ago with the city where we did a historic renovation for the Governor's School of the Arts. And as part of the, the payment, the debt payment on there, the city provides us a annual rent payment for that, to support that debt. Also, we're looking for the additional home program funds for down payment closing costs of $1 million. And then the Home, CHODO, that's a community housing development organization set aside. Those are local, small, community-based housing providers. Right now, our primary one has been Southampton Roads Habitat for Humanity. We're also working with Beacon Light, and we have a few other CHODOs that are coming forth. So we're requesting additional funds to support that effort, as well as then just our home program management of $120,000. And then finally, the Community Development Block Grant Funds. We're looking for $150,000, and that supports the administration of the HomeNet program. And again, HomeNet oversees all of our homeownership efforts. Any questions on the, on the funding?
Well, certainly, you've made these requests before in the past and been rather successful, I presume. I want to talk a little bit about how successful and how that has worked in the past.
Ouch. So last year, we requested $8.6 million, and we received 2.3 million. We had a heavy ask in the, in the capital improvement program, specifically for the St. Paul's area with $3 million and another $1.5 million for another project in the city. The city, at that point, declined to fund those. We also had a heavy ask for our home program, for our needs for down payment closing cost assistance. The city had some other projects that they were working on. So instead of the, I think, $2 million that we asked for, they came in with $560,000. So this year, we've ratcheted back our request. As we've advanced the St. Paul's work in Young and Calvert, our hope is this year that we will see that funding from the city in that effort, as well as the success that we've been having in our homeownership programs and our coordination with the city on that. We're, we're, again, hopeful that we'll see the additional bump in the home program funding. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. One more question with the home program, which has become very popular in the city of Norfolk with the advertisement. Like, how does, I know there's been an increase in inquiries, like, is that kind of a process that's on hold until we get the funds? Do we not have?
We have, we have this year's, current year's funding, as well as a little balance from last year, very little. But we also received some additional funds from, last year, from the Hampton Road Planning District Commission of about $240,000. So we have, currently, we have five home clients under contract that are moving forward.
Awesome.
One of the things that we did do, that we had to do, is drop the payment back from $60,000 back down to $40,000 so that we could serve more, more families. Another, though, strategy that we've been looking at is we're looking to go out and look for additional funds to support our down payment and, down payment efforts. And so we're working, we'll be working with Virginia Housing and other grant sources in order to bring additional funds to the, to the, you know, to our projects. One of the things that we're also looking to do is, you know, this may be too much information at this point in time, but for our motin project, is a project specific, we're looking to go after, whether it's a federal home loan, AHP dollars that could support it, or the state's got a new program, Workforce Housing Investment Program, WIP. I've got to be careful about all the acronyms, but that also would support down payment costs. So we're going to be going after a lot of additional funding in order to support our homeownership efforts.
Awesome. Do we need, Ms. Carnes, do we need to open up for comments in regards to?
No, on this one, sir.
All right, can we get a motion to approve this? So moved.
Second.
Properly moving to second. Ms. Carnes, can you call the roll?
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Casagrande?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Finally, I have before you, coming with hat in hand, we've been working on the Sykes RAD slash Lytec renovation conversion project for a while. We're near close. We're hoping to close by, by the 15th of December in this year. There is a little bit of headwinds in front of us with respect to the current shutdown, which does present some problems. But as that gets resolved, we have, we are setting up everything so that we can get to close. But one of the key things that has changed is some of the initial assumptions and sort of initial items where we went in for, came before the board back in April of this year and requested an authorization for $2.3 million in NRHA investment, that's primarily through our capital funds, into the project. We had a certain amount of money that we thought we'd get in for the equity based on the tax credit pricing. Also, with the interest rates and the, the debt costs, and then just construction costs overall, that we've had some increases. In order to ensure that we can get to close, we're coming back for the board today, this is hat in hand, to get an authorization for another $1.5 million in capital funds to be invested into the project up to that amount so that we can get to close by this year, and by 12/15. And so the item before the board today is to authorize us to invest another $1.5 million into the project. We have brought this, again, before the Housing and Public Safety Committee, the Development Committee, and the Finance Committee.
Can we hear from the committees in regards to some more details and opinions on that?
I can follow up on that, just as far as where it fits in the budget, if you guys can.
Is that a question?
That was toward the Finance Committee. When the Vice Chair asked for commentary, I just wanted to know how that would work within the budget that we have.
The, well, I mean, this was presented in the exact same manner that we talked about here. This was, these were unforeseen expenses that have become incurred as a consequence of things that were discovered when you start tearing into the project.
The biggest change, originally, when we, when we put out for our debt and equity financing, we had anticipated for the tax credits that we would receive somewhere between 83 to 85 cents. The pricing that we got was 79 cents. There's a lot of uncertainty in the, in the current condition. So the cost for, for the debt, the cost on the, or the pricing on the equity has created some holes in the project.
I understand that. My question's more directed towards the committee, which is, understanding that, how, how is that going to affect our budget going forward? And, you know, how much of a, how much wiggle room do we have, if any, in order to do this? And if no wiggle room, what is it going to do to the bottom line?
So to answer that question from a Developers Committee perspective, I ask the same question. And I think, and we all can chime in, I think it causes some downstream opportunities from a financing perspective. And that's the truth, right? Like, no one anticipates, you know, an extra $1.5 million being spent. So it's going to come from somewhere, right? And the thing that I ask is that, because, of course, this is a very important project, you know, for our elderly community. It's very important. And we've already put it out there that we're going to make sure that we revitalize these particular buildings, is that we have some transparency around what are the impacts, financial impacts, and be honest about it, right? Because it's coming from somewhere, right? And the commentary is that, hey, downstream, there will be some opportunities, and we just want to stay ahead of those, you know, if we all make a conscious decision to approve this. We want to stay ahead of those from a communication perspective, saying, hey, we're going to have to take cuts here, or even some value engineering that may have to happen. Because I know you said "up to." So we hope, we hope "up to" means you don't need the whole thing. But, you know, I understand, you know, in regards to what you're saying.
And I concur with you, Vice Chair, about the importance of this. I think I've probably framed my question not the best way possible. I, I guess, I'm looking at, have we looked at the budget to determine where we can peel away necessar, as we go forward in order to cover over for the impact? That's really kind of, I think, what I'm looking at.
Two things. So for the Sykes budget, yes, we're actually already in a value engineering standpoint to see where we can save money, because, and that will fluctuate.
Like no roof, right?
Yes, yeah. So that's one aspect. So we'll be tightening up where we can there. The other thing that we'll be doing is we'll be going after additional funding in the future to, again, resolve some of the issues. So there are sources of funds that we had always anticipated going after post-close. And so we will be amping those up once we get to close.
Not to kick a dead horse, but are there outside of this project itself, other line items in our yearly budget that we can look at and say, hey, this is not something?
I think I can answer that also. The answer is yes.
Yeah.
Okay? And what I would say is, looking singularly at this, you know, this particular siloed item, you know, this, this was unexpected. Let me ask you, Steve, along those lines, are you going to come back again for any more of these? Or we got zeroed in pretty closely on this?
We're zeroing in pretty close. So the next item, you'll see this again, not this specific item, but you will see the final bond item probably next month, where we'll need the board's approval for the absolute final number on the bonds, because we have an up to amount of $17 million. And so there needs to be a final vote on that. But, no, we're there. We're, you're refining and sharpening the pencils. But Commissioner Casagrande, I think the biggest thing is, this impacts the capital fund budget, and the, you guys will see that again in revisions coming up. And there are, there is some play in that, but there's also, there's always uncertainty in there because that's an annual basis of what HUD gives us. So it, you know, regardless of this project, if HUD comes in next year and decreases our capital fund amount by $2 million, we've got to make adjustments. If they come in and upped it by $2 million, we would have to come in and, you know, you basically come in for the revision.
No, I got, I understand where you are now, and particularly with the uncertainty surrounding HUD, it's kind of, at this point, we're throwing darts, right?
Well, to the point you asked, to the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
We have meetings on a monthly basis that include the entire financial staff, where there are all sorts of issues that are, that are discussed regarding value costs and the, and the fluid nature... the fluid nature of the, the evolution of the budget over the course of a fiscal year. And so, I, I think it's fair to say that while the, this particular project had a budget, had a, did not have a buffer built into the budget, there are plenty of other ones that we can figure out how, in the context of the strategic plan and the priority set, to make this work.
And that's what I meant about the wiggle room stuff.
And what we want to do is just make sure, these don't happen very often.
Absolutely.
Nathan, just to follow up with the Executive Director, I just want to, you had raised it, but the capital fund is what you were going to, okay, got it. I just wanted to make sure.
The cap fund, and it might require us to adjust projects down, down the line, as Steve said. I mean, we are working in real time to make sure that any funding sources that we identify can come in, like Federal Home Loan Bank can come in on the backend, and we can apply it to Sykes. So, and we will seek other funding to advance some of our other work as well that may have been capitalized.
Understood. And as you said, this is, this, this particular project is high on the priority list compared to potentially stuff that is, other things on the, on the budget. So, that, that, that solves it for me from everybody. So, thank you for bearing with me.
I've got a quick question. You know, we've sort of danced around it. Do we have any specifics on what we're going to cut based on, based on what, what's not going to happen because we're going to do this?
No. And it's not anything that's going to, it's nothing that impacts, remember, for the capital fund, we have a, we have a length of time to expend those funds. So, there isn't anything necessarily, in terms of projects that are planned for FY '26, that are in jeopardy of happening.
Good point. Okay. All right. Do we need to take a vote on this particular item? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the $1.5 million increase in the budget for Sykes?
I make a motion that we approve it as requested by Steve Morales.
Second.
Properly moved and second, Ms. Carnes, can you take the roll?
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Casa Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Got your money, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Executive Director comments. Don't come back, Steve.
Thankfully, I'm not coming for money today. So, thank you. Good morning again. So, I did want to start where we were kind of seizing up anyway, was on the federal shutdown. So, we're on day 16. Feels like Survivor, but we're on day 16 of it. And so, you know, where we landed in terms of funding available, funding was, 45 days essentially of funding was made available to the agency at the beginning of October 1st. So, we were able to do everything necessary for our October activities. So, HAP run went off without a hitch, payroll was made, all of our expenditures were paid through that period of time. And so, just want to let that be known. There has been additional conversations that additional funding is available within the federal budget that the department could push out very soon. So, it isn't that there isn't, technically, why there isn't money appropriated, if you will. There is savings within the existing framework of budget that they were working with. So, there are additional dollars that are available that we expect to carry us through. Internally, we are looking at our non-restricted revenue and really trying to determine in terms of what that pot looks like and what that prioritization would be. Certainly, when we get a little bit closer to the end of the month to get a better sense, obviously, we'll interact with the board to talk through potentially what that looks like.
Pardon me real quick. The, have, and I'm not suggesting that it would, but in my past life, as a owner of a government contracting company, these are the kinds of things that we had, had us sweating for a long time. And, you know, we would be calculating down to the day, you know, if, if it goes this long, this is what happens. If it goes this long, this is what happens.
Yes.
Have you guys started looking, like, where, where, if you have, where, not that I'm thinking it's going to go this long, but, for instance, if it goes 30 days, if it goes 45 days, if it goes 60 days, do we have thoughts about, you know, contingencies and such like, and where we're going to head with that?
Yes. So, if you recall, at the beginning of the year, which doesn't, which seems long ago, but not long ago, we were dealing with a situation where we obviously could not access our funds at the time.
Right.
That certainly passed, but that, that started us going in the direction to really look and see what, what we could do. So, in terms of what we could really float for that period of time, we were somewhere like around two months. So, you know, and that didn't necessarily require us to kind of reduce some things, but, you know, certainly we would have to look at it to see, again, which we will. But that was where we were at the beginning of the year.
Thank you very much.
No problem. And as I said, I mean, as we continue to figure out things, we will let you know. I mean, there are simple things that we are definitely trying to figure out. The department was planning to do a visit to Hampton Roads next week and visit a number of authorities. And so, there was a phone call yesterday, the, let's say Thursday, so probably Tuesday, with one of our neighbors, asking, have we heard anything? And we did not. And so, we both shot emails over, and then we got the standard, you know, as of 12, 12 o'clock? Yes, it was 12:00 midnight, it was shut down. And so, we're waiting to hear back from that. So, definitely stay tuned. In terms of YARDI, and we did, and I want to back up for a second, too, and we have continuously tried to put out communication, both internally to the staff, as well as externally to stakeholders, to let them know in terms of where we stand. And so, we plan to do so, again, towards the end of the month, beginning of next month. Want to touch on YARDI really quick, because there is a lot of different things that are happening around that. One, I want to update in terms of the numbers and individuals who have signed up thus far. So, to date, we have 318 landlords that have signed up for the portal. We have 803 residents that have signed up. And the individuals who are interested in terms of being applicants on the waitlist, we have 2,941. So, we have currently about 4,062 constituents, you know, signed up to work within the YARDI system. November 1st, and we've started the marketing around this. And so, November 1st, residents will be able to pay their rent online via Rent Cafe, and so, we're pretty excited about that. We put some correspondence out already about that. There's a YouTube video that's already available, so we've directed folks to that in terms of the how-to and what they need to do. As you also know, we're required on an annual, on a regular basis to refresh, if you will, our waiting lists. And so, we have started that process using YARDI. And so, we refer to that as Save My Spot. And so, that's for individuals to complain, to confirm their information and maintain their place on the, on the waiting list. And so, for any individuals who need reasonable accommodation or assistance, they can email reasonableaccommodation@nrha.us. And if you have general, general questions as to Save My Spot, the email address is savemyspot@nrha.us. So, we have some upcoming training for YARDI coming up around Rent Cafe. And so, October 16th, at 10:00 in the morning, staff will be at Hunter Square to provide that assistance, and then 2:00 that same day at Franklin Arms. We have additional training dates that are forthcoming. They are always posted on our social media, delivered to both our resident advisory boards and to the communities as well. I did want to talk about property management, highlight a couple of key things. One thing we've talked about over time is waitlists. We've talked about occupancy numbers. We've talked about refresh. We talked about everything that kind of goes together to get somebody, somebody's head in the bed. And so, we've made some internal changes to help, you know, with that process. So, as you know, occupancy has generally maintains the waitlist for both public housing, our project-based voucher communities, as well as the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And so, what we've done is kind of split the group up, if you will. And so, the intake specialists have moved over to the property management side. Their titles have been changed to leasing specialists. And so, those leasing specialists will maintain the waitlist. They will work with the quality control and assurance team, as well as working with the maintenance team to make sure that a person who is being pulled from the waitlist, scheduled to see the, see the unit, to make sure everything is available, so the unit can be occupied. Our goal is to reduce processing time, wait times, because that is important. And it provides stronger oversight and accountability. I know that's something we've talked about in terms of that number. And so, I think that that's something that we will see continue to go up. The refresh piece, the unit refresh initiative has continued to, to, to work. And so, we do still have that active at Young and Calvert, as well as Dickstown and Oakleaf, as well as Grandy Village. And it's making a difference. People are talking about things a little bit differently. And so, we want to continue to do that. We are still continuing to work through a process. We have a huge portfolio. And so, we're continuing to work through that process to get to as many people as we can. We want people to, residents to feel excited about their communities, where they live. And so, we want to get positive feedback. And so, we're working to do a resident survey, satisfaction survey, to get additional feedback. We do not want high vacancy. We want high occupancy. And so, to be able to do that requires better coordination, and that's what we're going to do. Any questions, right now?
Yeah. Real quick, Edie, how do we, how do we measure this change in the process, like, what are we going to do to measure the improvement? I know it's a new system, and we're looking for some results. How are we going to kind of measure those results and report back, so that we can kind of know whether the change or adjustment is working?
I think it's, I mean, one part is, I mean, we measure the days from when somebody's pulled from the waitlist until they actually sign up for, you know, get their paperwork through. So, they qualify for the unit and get into the unit. I think that's the biggest piece.
Okay. Will that be something that we'll see in our board packet, or will it be reviewed monthly?
I think definitely we'll, we'll figure out how to translate that into the board packet for everybody to talk about. I do want to make sure that we work it through the committees, for sure. And I, and I mean, through all, various committees, for, for sure. I mean, the public housing piece, for sure, finance, too, because there's a financial implication in terms of occupancy numbers. So, and I want to figure out collectively and work with Brendan, her team, and Deborah, to figure out how we want to, you know, present that to the board. I will say this broadly, we've talked about this over the last couple of days, we would like to cut down the board packet. And so, that's a, that's a goal of us, of ours, to work through between now and the end of the calendar year, to work with you on that collectively, to get your feedback. But we want to make sure that we're producing the right information that lets you know in terms of how the programs are operating. But, yeah, we can, definitely, we should see, we should see some difference in terms of occupancy numbers going up. But I think to the drill down of how everything is working, we'll, we'll figure out how to present that.
I want to make a comment on that.
Sure.
In regards to trimming down the board packet, I just, for, for us commissioners, I want us to remember that, even though, even when Nathan comes up here and gives his updates and the departmental updates, they are a representation of the agency and where we currently are. So, I mean, we might not always speak about everything in detail in those packets, but a lot of times, people talk about, they don't hear about things, or they don't see things. So, I think, as a board, we really have to consider those things. If it's not in the packet, and you didn't hear about it, it's going to be like it never occurred, right? So, we want to be very careful in regard to removing information, because a lot of times, I think, where we get flack is, people say, oh, I didn't hear about this, or I didn't know, or I didn't understand. So, it's like, if you're not going to put it in a packet, and you're not going to talk about it, how are people going to understand what it is, what information that we're doing, what we're working on? So, we got to kind of find a balance. I think we should talk about that, because reducing that board packet, you know, so I want to, I want to hear some comments around that.
I can follow up. I, I, this is just my own personal take on it. I always read every page of the board packet. I think more, from my perspective, the issue is, we have it to read, we don't need it presented in full at this, at the meeting. That, that's where I see the distinction of the line, because I agree, Terry, I'm Vice Chair, I, I agree that there, there's a lot of information in there that we need to know. And, and we have no right to say, well, I didn't know that, if it's in there. So, I'm not necessarily in favor of reducing the size of the packet. I'm more so in favor of not having it be repetitive, because I've read it already. Now, now that said, it could be pared back. There are some things in there that don't need to be in there, but, but, but that's, that's where my own personal position is.
Appreciate that. Any, any other comment? And one thing that you raised, the YARDI implementation has actually been a subject of discussion in the Finance Committee on a pretty routine basis. I have to say, we had a very robust agenda on Monday's meeting, or on Tuesday's meeting, so we didn't discuss it then.
Yeah.
But, but you're right, it is a, it has implications that spill over into the domain of the Finance Committee. And Ms. Johnson and the other financial staff have been keeping us apprised of things. We did raise the same question you did. How are we gauging the satisfaction? And I believe, I seem to remember asking that question, watching somebody furiously write down a note on that. So, it's, it is an important metric as we roll this out.
Okay.
I think it might also be worthwhile that, as we streamline, talk about streamlining, streamlining the packet, kind of keeping it clear of the things that we've talked about as a board that we need. So, it might be worthwhile in those discussions, maybe, to talk about a form of a template.
Yes.
That we might be able to say at a glance.
Yes.
And, and I think we might be able, as a board, to say some things that we're looking for, maybe.
Yes.
That we could, you know, periodically get at a glance what's going on.
Yes.
And, you know, what's maybe at the high, high pinnacle of what it is that's happening in the agency. And I think that might be good for transparency and open communication across the board.
To, to that point, Commissioner Lewis, there's a saying in medicine, if everything is critical, nothing is critical. And, you know.
Everything, yeah.
We, we, we can't necessarily gauge the, the effort of the work that we're putting in by how many pages there are on the, on the, in the board packet. There's a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts in running this agency. We can't possibly, as board, as, as members of the board, we can't possibly know about all of them.
Absolutely.
Even if you read all of the board packet.
Right.
That's why we hire the Executive Director. But it is incumbent upon the leadership of the board and the Executive Director to work, in my opinion, to work at developing an agenda, a pattern of the agenda, that where the things that are there are critical, so that we can strip the wheat from the chaff.
Yeah. I agree. We'd look forward to you presenting something in the nature.
I think we've discussed before, and I'm not sure it's, it may be what happened with it, but, dashboard, in general, particularly with regard to HUD's requirements of us as an organization. And for that is, green, red, yellow, red. That requiring attention, and, excuse me, yellow requiring attention, red being? That needs to be, you know, in my opinion, classic business operation, that should be front.
So, you probably see the compliance team kind of huddled up back there chatting, because they do have a drive of it together for that. And so, our goal is to make sure, because all of the departments have to feed into that, so we have to set that degree of protocol. Some of that information we can pull just generally from our reports. But, yes, our goal is to get that to you right away.
I mean, you're talking about simplifying the board packet, like. HUD, that's our only one job, is that. And so, if you want to simplify the board packet.
Keep it to that.
What's important?
Sure.
In, in the front, rest can be the chaff, but, you know, that's the wheat right there.
Okay. No, I think that makes sense. Well, as I said, I mean, we, we've had the, we've, we've started the conversation our, and our goal is to get you a template that you can look at and give some comments to. Like I said, I mean, our goal is over the next two months to kind of flesh all of that out, so we can say, hey, by January, when we return back from the meet, the first meeting for then, we already have a good template ready to go.
Mr. Sims, if I could, and Chair, if I could go back, a couple of things. We discussed in our subcommittee, the intake specialists.
Correct.
That, that had come from occupancy.
Yes.
As I, as I thought about it following our meeting, I would like to ask, while those, and I forget the number, I think Ms. Brenda had mentioned it was about four or six.
Three, with the number four, four.
Four, four, okay, four, okay. It was four.
Yes.
Now, they came from occupancy to work as intake specialists. I'm wondering.
That was their title. That was their current title, as intake specialist.
Yeah, they were intake specialists, now they're.
Leasing specialists.
Leasing specialists.
Correct.
What, I'm wondering what might be the impact.
Yes.
To occupancy, having taken those persons. Are, they're looking to hire in that area for the people that they've taken, or?
Well, I think this is a good time to kind of talk through some of the things, because... Well, I think this is a good time to kind of talk through some of the things because both Brenda and Pam, I see Pam back there behind Steve, but, and so this was a discussion that we had jointly together, right, around these changes, the impact and how would it impact them. I think one part for Brenda's area, she's, she's kind of working that out in terms of what that looks like. With Pam's area, we're still working through that particular piece in terms of what that looks like because there's the quality control aspect that goes into that. That was something that was previously shared that won't be shared going forward and what that looks like and so the impact to managing the waitlist and all that. We're not concerned in terms of there will be significant impact or downturn in service, but we do want to look at it closely to be able to say, now we have this technology and now we're doing this, these kind of moves, what do, what does it look like?
And let me ask this one final question and this onto something else. Last night I attended Grandy Village, the Chew and Chat.
Yes.
And on, on last evening, some of the questions came up relative to YADI and how people are to pay their rent.
Yes.
And one young lady asked if they would still be able to pay their rent by phone as if that might be taken away from them when YADI comes on paying their rent. I was not sure about it, but that was a question.
I'm not familiar about phone. That's the first, we've not had that option.
Paying rent by phone?
No.
Okay.
No, that's not an option.
Go to the rental office. How, how were they doing that? I don't, I don't know.
I mean, you can go, you can go to the rental, I mean, you can go to the rental office to, to make your payment. You can go online to make your payment.
Okay.
Go online from your phone.
Absolutely.
So yes.
Was referring to online by her phone, they'll still be able to do that?
Yeah, that's the Rent Cafe aspect of it. You can just download the app, you can go to it. Brenda did a whole video.
I'm sure that's what she was talking about.
I hope so. Yeah, I know. I hope so.
Maybe that's what she meant.
Yeah, no, but no, that feature, if you're, if you're paying for your phone in terms of the app, yes, you can do that. You'll be able to do that for beginning of November 1st and we put that information out.
Okay, okay.
And we'll continue to canvass.
I was just taking notes from the Chew and Chat.
But that.
And I was writing down what, what people asked.
Yeah, that used to be a thing. You used to have to pay bills by the phone.
By phone, yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
I'm old enough, I'm old enough to remember that.
I just want to pay by check. I'm old enough to remember that. I just want to let Melissa know in the back, I didn't section that, you know what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure. But yes, you'll be able to use that. You'll be able to use the Rent Cafe app.
If she's listening in, okay, the Rent Cafe. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That was the stuff of the day. I appreciate that. And so just real quick, just in terms of some other things, as you know, you came into the, for those who came into the garage, we finally moved to the, the cashless piece which has been really interesting. And so we have a cashless garage now and that should make things a little bit easier. Our team is, the finance team is doing some training along with, I think with HCV as well, with BDO starting next, next week. We had a successful wellness fair for the employees last week too. That was kind of a, that was really a big deal. So shout out to HR, operations, our employee engagement recognition committee and all that were involved in that process. So thank you. Quickly, just on a couple of different fronts, just in the interest of time, we started the lease up for Unity at Kindred. And so that's happening really kind of on, ongoing right now. And so Unity at Kindred will be 140 units in two buildings total. One building will be 68 units, the other will be 72. And Block 17, it has 48 replacement units in there and then Block 18 as well. So, I'm sorry, no, no replacement units there. And so Kinship is under construction as you can see, all of the stuff that's happening out there. And so we hope that by fall of '26, that'll be complete. In terms of Unity, you should be prepared, I guess, in the next month or so, hopefully in the next month or two, it's, hopefully, so that we can have a ribbon cutting for that, which should be forthcoming and I think everybody should check that out. I did want to say quickly too, we've updated the landing pages for St. Paul's Transformation. We'd be happy to show that at the next meeting, but if you get a chance, we have updated that significantly to talk about the things that are happening within St. Paul's, not only just with Kindred, but also the work that we're doing with Young Terrace and Calvert Square. So that I think is good. So shout out to communications around that and thank you Rebecca for taking all my markups, right? So I appreciate that. And I would say, I've got to save my spot. Steve mentioned about Sykes in the closing there and so we're working through that particular process to hopefully get it closed by mid-December. And so on November 5th, there'll be a Friends and Family event. We did a Friends and Family event some months back and that was very well attended for family members of the residents there to hear what's going on and what, you know, things that'll be happening and answering their questions so that they are comfortable and the residents are comfortable as well. And then we talked about Rent Cafe, we talked about the payments. Lastly, I do want to thank Client Services and Communication. I had them working like a news crew last week and they were recording a lot of different things, getting a lot of communications out and so thank you for that. One of the things particularly I want to highlight is, as we all know, there was inclement weather in the area over the weekend. It was not as bad thankfully as it was anticipated, though it still was flooding as well. But I did go to them right away to both Leah and Julius and said, hey, weather's bad, it's going to turn for the worse Saturday afternoon. Can we get some transportation for the residents so they can make a grocery store run? Because we just didn't know how bad it was going to be. They jumped, did it, set it up, got it on there. We had Brenda do a video to talk about some things really quickly. We wanted to answer some Rent Cafe related questions. Mikiya lost her voice, so Mikiya could not do the recording. Sade, I don't know how she was walking down the hallway at the time we were having this conversation, but happened to be walking down the hall, so she got snatched in, did a wonderful recording.
She did a great job.
And so I say thank you to her for that and so I want to say thank you to the team for jumping in. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
I think, I think.
Yep.
There's a great deal of uncertainty about how long this shutdown is going to last.
Yes.
And the impact, you know, is going to, you know, we, we may be fine through a period of weeks, but the impact may hit suddenly. And I'm wondering if you can do your best, I'm not asking for a crystal ball here, but to keep us apprised of where, you know, in some general way, keep the board apprised of where we stand.
Yes.
As we start arriving at, you know, potentially hitting the wall.
Yes.
Cash flow was.
Absolutely.
That's where I was going. Yeah.
I'm going to translate when he was.
Sure.
And, you know, what this goes to in, in, you know, in the business world that I am is days cash on hand.
Yes.
And when we start winding up with questions about that, it would be helpful to know about that in advance.
Absolutely. Agreed. Okay.
There's another thing else, I think we have departmental updates, Client Services.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, good morning.
As you've been listening to me over the last year or so, we've been talking about the importance of partnership to, and how important all of our partnerships is in terms of making sure we have the capacity not to be able to put clients in a parking lot, but to be able to provide actual services to meet the needs of our, our clients. And today, I, I have a guest and this is a wonderful guest. You probably see me smiling about this particular guest. This particular guest has provided services for us over years. But I have to say, in the last year and a half, the intensity in which they've been providing services has increased, so has the intensity in which our executive director has been, has been working. But I like to say, this particular guest today is Mr. Sean Avery. Mr. Sean Avery is with a, with Hampton Roads Workforce Council. Hampton Roads Workforce Council has allowed us the ability to provide services to everyone that's in our community. Sometimes in our community, we have the elephant in the room in terms of there may be someone that's not on the lease. Hampton Roads Workforce Council works with everybody. So when we talk about providing services for credentialing, licenses, certification, training opportunities, workforce, Hampton Roads Workforce Council does it all. So I'm happy to introduce the, the CEO, Executive Director, Mr. Sean Avery.
All right, Sean.
Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity for a few minutes just to give you an update. First of all, I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for the partnership. You've been working with us for many years, but as soon as Nathan came on board, he reached out and we've been working together as well and been a great partnership. The Hampton Roads Workforce Council, we are a regional organization. We represent all 15 cities and counties in Hampton Roads, but I'll tell you, because you are in the room, Norfolk's our favorite. How about that? I'll say that. But in front of you, I have a brochure, our latest annual snapshot. This actually came out last week. This kind of gives you the big picture overview of what we're doing. We work with thousands of people. We had 12,000 people visit our Virginia Career Works Centers. We have one right here in Norfolk. We had over, we had over 2,400 people visit our Veterans Employment Centers. Again, we have one right here in Norfolk. We have our youth programs in partnership with many of the programs we've got. We were very close with Norfolk Public Schools. So we, as, as was said, we've got a big footprint. We used to be called Opportunity Inc. I throw that out every once in a while because we've been around for 50 years, we've had a lot of different names, but the most recent one was Opportunity. But I really wanted to hammer home how important our partnership is right now. We're working very close with, with you all and the city on a program called Norfolk Strong and also on Thrive, Norfolk Thrive, working with the United Way. And those have been game changers. While we are a regional organization, we know that we really have to do it in the neighborhoods. So we do, we, we have dedicated programs that are happening in each of the localities and I'm, I'm very excited about what we're seeing with Norfolk Thrive and Norfolk Strong. Norfolk Strong, for example, is really focused on getting individuals into the maritime industry. Right now, if you have anybody that you know or anybody in, in, in your service area that is interested in getting in the maritime industry, we can get you in there free of charge. Any of the training right now is basically free of charge. We've got funding from the city, but we also have funding from the United States Navy, from the, from the Commonwealth of Virginia. So it's basically free of charge for you right now. And that funding is still flowing even though some of our other funding has also stopped just like Nathan's, but that money is still flowing. And I wanted to, I got some stats straight off the press this morning. I said, let me, give me the best stats you got. As of this morning, we had, in Norfolk Strong, we had over 151 completers. We had, I'm sorry, 151 go into training, 124 completed, 76 of those have gone into employment. And I just wanted to point out that many of those are still in the process of going, getting their services, getting the resume, finishing the training. Almost anybody that completes a maritime training program now is getting hired before they're even done the training program. And that's in the shipbuilding, ship repair, that's in Newport News Shipbuilding, you name it, ports and logistics, offshore wind, all that stuff is happening right now. I wanted to also point out that, and this has been in partnership with you all, those, those numbers that I gave you exceeded our goals. 21% exceeded in training completions, 24% in the number of individuals that went into training and 119% in employment. So it is making a difference because we're in the communities we represent. I also want to mention too, we have a program around emerging workforce. So like was mentioned, we don't turn away anybody. We want to be able to work with anybody. We want to be able to work with the youth. We want to be able to work with the individuals that are working on it. If you're a veteran, we've got programs for you. We've got a program called our Emerging Workforce Program and we've been doing some programs around working with youth ages 14 to 24. And yes, I know some of us would hate to say that we were youth at 24, but you still are. We have special programs where we can actually help individuals get back into school, get their GED, get connected to, with resources that they may, may need. So I know I had limited time, but I just wanted to point out that it's these type of partnerships that really make the difference. We can't do it by ourselves. We are pretty, we're a good sized organization, but again, we represent the region. It's when we start to do these partnerships with organizations like Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing, that's when we start to really make a difference in individuals' lives. So, so again, there's a lot of information there. I'm more than happy to take email if you've got questions afterwards, but I'm also happy to answer any questions now if, but yes, sir.
What's the duration of the maritime training program?
Great question. A lot of it is very short term, so it's certification type efforts. I mean, we do have some long-term programs as well, but we have one that's even like three weeks long. Newport News Shipbuilding has set up a program with Virginia Ship Repair Association and the community colleges called the Maritime Trades Training Program. It's really three weeks long with some of those training programs. It's really just an entry level, get them in there and then Newport News, for example, will train you on the spot. We also have longer ones that are six weeks, 12 weeks in our healthcare, which is also one that we're very much focused on. Same type of thing, we have longer term programs. We can pay up to $6,000 for training over two-year timeframe. So it depends on what the individual's looking for, but we do know a lot of people who are coming into us that want to get into training, they need to pay bills. They don't have the luxury of going into a two-year training program. So they want to get into the short-term training programs and get right into the workforce and get, and get the.
What's the age demographic of most of the folks that are going through?
I will tell you, in the maritime industry and the healthcare, it's a pretty broad range, but we're kind of seeing in the 18 to 26, 27 range. We do have some individuals that are career switchers that have come in and said, it's time for me to look for something else, that career's really not driving me. Or they've been in part-time jobs, they've been working multiple jobs, they're ready to make a change. So that, that kind of draws it out as well. In our veterans populations, it's a little bit older skewed because of individuals that are transitioning out of the military. But we don't turn anybody away. That's important.
Mr. Avery, one last question. I know you mentioned around the ages of 14, do you do any summer job programs?
We absolutely do, do summer job programs. We do internship programs, we do summer job programs. We just need to be reached out. We basically can customize any type of program and partnerships. So yes, reach out. I'll tell you, we've helped many of the localities in their summer job programs doing recruitment or doing actual programming. So we have a whole team that can actually jump in there as well on that.
I definitely want to.
That would be great. Follow up on that. That'd be great. The big part of that is actually recruiting the businesses. So any help on that too?
Yes, Sean, where do we send people if they want to learn more about this?
You can send them to your team or we've got our Virginia Career Works Centers which are located right at Glen Rock Road. That's our biggest center in the region, they can go there. But honestly, we come out. So if you've got somebody that's interested or you want to do a program, please just reach out to me and then I'll, I'll connect with the team. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. You've got a great team here, so.
Thank you for the time. Thank you very much for what you do.
Before Sean leaves, when I saw him today, one of the first things I said was that we're currently working on a Jobs Plus grant. And one of our major partners as, for that Jobs Plus application is Hampton Roads Workforce Council.
Twenty-two million dollars.
So I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
All right, so next departmental update, we have Compliance and Performance Management. Ms. Brown?
Good morning, good morning.
Good to see you.
You're doing wonderful this morning.
Yes.
So we have the Economics Opportunity Committee update here. Can you all hear me now? Okay, perfect. I just didn't want to stand in front of it. So I am Kiara Brown. I am the Vice President of Policy and Performance Management with the Compliance and Performance Management Department and I am on the Economic Opportunities Committee with Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
With Brian, with Ed and with Julius as well. Ed, and with Julius as well. So, brief welcome. Meeting objectives, we're going to do an overview, a review of our policy, vision, and mission, an overview of what Client Services and Section 3 does within the committee, an example of what our Economic Opportunities Impact Reporting will look like, and then our closings and key takeaways.
Ms. Kiara, could we real quick, could we have Mr. Brown and the others of that, of our committee stand up, please?
Oh, okay.
So, people will know who they are. They're with us today.
So, there's Ed Davis, who is the Chief Officer of Compliance, and then we have Brian, who is the VP of Federal Programming as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Perfect. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay. So, we have basically our definition and our purpose, our role within the agency, and then our key responsibilities. So, we are a standing committee that is extremely focused on advancing the equity access and economic opportunity for not only our residents, but also the community of Norfolk as well. So, within that, we advise leadership on different policies and program initiatives to ensure our inclusion in housing, employment, and contracting opportunities. So, within that, it is expanded more to promote local hiring, business opportunities. We monitor compliance with Section 3 requirements, and we also work with Julius on fostering those partnerships with educational institutions, employers, and service providers. So, it's only fitting that Mr. Avery was up here talking about his workforce development because we will also be utilizing his resources within our committee as well. So, our policy statement here states that Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority is committed to creating meaningful economic opportunities that promote financial stability and long-term success for Norfolk residents. Through programs that expand housing access, strengthen workforce development, enhance financial literacy, and support small business growth, NRHA works to increase economic mobility and independence. By fostering the community collaboration and strategic partnerships, NRHA aims to build sustainable pathways that empower all residents to achieve lasting financial growth. So, case in point, we are committed to expanding and developing the economic opportunities for the residents and the communities that we serve in Norfolk. We also have our mission statement and our vision statement that encompass the same thing as well. So, here we have an overview of Client Services. I know it sounds repetitive, but we want to make sure we have our key players and ensuring what they do on the committee as well and how we support them and how they support the agency. So, Client Services is responsible for the direct resident engagement, supportive services, and resource connection. They provide employment readiness and job placement programs, the financial literacy coaching, and digital opportunity initiatives, the resident outreach, engagement, and case management function. So, they do work closely with the committee to ensure that all of our services align with not only Section 3, but also all of our economic opportunity goals. Okay. So, right here, the figures that are shown today are only an example, but they are an illustrative measurement used to demonstrate how we would like to present our numbers coming in the future meetings and what that format looks like. So, the actual data across the programs is currently being reviewed by Client Services and Compliance and will be incorporated into the next report for the next meeting. So, here, what we have is we have our overall number of residents that are served month to date. So, when we say month, month to date, we always go back to the previous month. So, that would be September to now, right? So, that would be 45. We will account for all the partnerships that we have had that month and all of the credentials earned, as well as keeping track of the different types of assistance provided and the workforce development outcomes.
I like it. Question, one question. Kiara, right?
Yes.
The partnerships, like when you say, I mean, of course, we'll have to learn your dashboard, but when you talk about like community partnerships monthly, what does that mean from an engagement perspective?
Oh, so just those partnerships that we've worked with, how many we've worked with that month and what that looks like. So, right here, we have year to date. That would, bless you. Here we have year to date. That would encompass fully all of the partners that we've engaged from January to September or the fiscal year. So, when we say month to date, it's just how many partners have we engaged with that month?
So, for example, like workforce development or any other organization?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, year to date encompasses the same thing as month to date, but this is more on a grander scale. So, right here, we have our Economic Growth Progress Report. So, what I've been working on with the Economic Opportunities Committee and with Client Services and Brian and Ed is we want to be able to compare, right? That comparison allows us to see the significance. The comparison also allows us to see the impact that we have made from month to month as well as from the year to date. So, when we compare that, we're able to see, are we increasing? Are we stabilized? Are we decreasing? Are there any areas of improvement that we can have? So, the significance, we have our residents of 45. We can see, are we reaching more residents by month? Are we being able to actively reflect a steady upward trend? Is there a downward trend? Has something happened and where can we make those improvements? An overview of Section 3. So, HUD requires that certain HUD-funded projects provide employment, training, and contracting opportunities to low and very low-income individuals and businesses. So, some of the goals of Section 3 is that at least 25% of total labor hours worked are worked by Section 3 workers. At least 5% of total labor hours worked are by targeted Section 3 workers. So, Section 3 is, Section 3 Compliance is a major performance to measure our success as a committee. Yes.
Is that, is that, I'm assuming they're organized and run by people who are qualified?
I can't hear you.
Very low-income businesses. What exactly is that?
Brian.
It qualifies as a low or very low-income business owner.
So, it's the business owner's income?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And the way it is measured is at least 51% of ownership has to be categorized as low or very low income.
I got a question about that Section 3 process, which is pretty challenging, I'm sure, you know, to be able to process. How are we sourcing that? And I know we're talking about contracts and work. How are we sourcing these Section 3 businesses? Because I think if I fully understand, Section 3 is that we're trying to train people within our community to be a part of some of these contracts or work for some of these companies. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, that is a part of the Section 3 requirement. We try to provide as many training and employment opportunities for not only residents of our communities, but the larger Norfolk residential makeup. Now, reporting is specified for construction activity, but Section 3 designation applies across the board to any type of business owner. So, what we try to do within our procurement office is any type of business opportunity that comes out of our agency, we try to promote and encourage Section 3 participation.
How do you do that from an incentive perspective, to be able to encourage people to?
Good question. Great question. So, what we try to do is offer bonus points for people who can demonstrate previous performance with Section 3 participation. They can present a Section 3 business plan, which will demonstrate to us the efforts that they will take, previous efforts that they have taken, success stories from those efforts, and things like that will be taken into consideration during the evaluation process of the solicitation.
Awesome.
Any more questions? Okay, perfect. So, I'll just explain some of our data that Brian has provided for us within Section 3. So, as you can see, we have orange in the outcome and three is the goal. So, Section 3 is basically exceeding their goals. We have 76% of the labor hours is the outcome, while 25% is the goal. 6% is the outcome, while 5% is the goal for targeted Section 3 worker labor. For the total MBE award amount, 28% is the outcome, while 12% is the goal. And we're still working on the WBE award amount, where currently the outcome is 2% and that goal is 3.3%. But all in all, we are exceeding the goals that Section 3 and HUD requires us to do.
And I want to just add, in our committee of talks, and I appreciate them working with me, because sometimes I get a little crazy, but we wanted to drill down on specifically residents in our community, of course, and abroad, but that we could drill down to make sure that some of these opportunities, you know, fit our community and that we have people in the pipeline ready to go when it's time for these opportunities. So, this is a great team I'm working with. Thank you. Continue.
Thank you. The next slide, please, Radja. So, closing in key takeaways, economic opportunity is a shared responsibility. So, it's not just the responsibility of one department, it's the responsibility of the entire agency. And more specifically, with our Economic Opportunities Committee, our Client Services, and with the work that Brian does with Section 3, we work together to make sure that we have those equitable opportunities. For our committee progress, we are advancing employment, training, and contracting outcomes for residents, and we're strengthening our partnerships to meet and exceed HUD Section 3 goals. So, moving forward, we will continue to refine our strategies in our data performance management reporting so that we can expand our economic mobility, not only to the board and the agency, but also to the residents in the community that we serve as well. And then we also want to continue to leverage the community and business partnerships for a greater impact. And so, it remains that our commitment is to build pathways to financial independence and stability for all Norfolk residents. And then, thank you. So, that is it. Our goal, again, is to make sure that we are building a stronger Norfolk through economic opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I want to just quickly add that this has taken a lot of work. I've spoken often to the board that this presentation was going to come to you. And so, over a year or more, I'm thinking, Mr. Sims and Kiara, we have worked together to pull this project together. It started out with the previous chair, Mr. Alfonso Albert, and I and Ms. Amy, we started out together. Now, I'm the only commissioner on this, on this particular subcommittee. So, as we make other selections, you know, I'd welcome any member that feels like this may be something that they're interested in. But a great team to work with. I appreciate all the work and the effort that went into compiling and bringing this to the Board of Commissioners. And I think at some point in time, we could probably get, if you need it, either a printed copy or somewhere where you can go and view it, as we will continue to move forward and work and serve our community and our city at large. Kiara, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
I did want to say thank you to the commissioners that were assigned to the committee and assigned to the committee and to our team. We're not kidding in terms of a lot of conversation took place. And I think the conversation, I think everybody, everyone can understand, it was less about policy. I think the policy pieces came, it was really around intent. And it was a lot of conversations around intent being meaningful. What did it mean? How do we connect the dots? So, you know, it was definitely time well spent at the end of the day. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll have a departmental update. So, we'll have the Finance, Developing, Public Health and Safety, and Economic Inclusion. I think we can start, if we want to start with Finance?
Really don't have anything to add.
Do we want to do Economic Inclusion? Well, I mean, I think we had an update that was pretty...
I would briefly like to just add that on October the 7th, we combined both Property Management and Safety Committee along with Economic Inclusion Committee.
Okay.
And I think it was all totaled of about 14 people, with myself included, that came together.
Oh, that's a party.
We're serious about what we're doing here, right?
Yeah, that's a party.
And I just want to appreciate Ms. Grace Washington. She is with J&amp;G Workforce. Corey, is that Corey U. Hines?
Corey Hines.
Corey Hines. He's with Development. Mr. Julius Norman, of course, we know him. Ms. Anita Day with the Real Estate Department. Bill Harrington with Property Management. Steve Morales with Development. Ms. Brenda Fleming, Property Management. Corey Brooks with Client Service. And Erica McRae. The ED was online because he was on travel. And Ms. Deborah was online. We had a phenomenal meeting addressing the issues confronting both these committees. And here you see kind of the outcome of some of that. So, thanks to all of the, and I was in the meeting. So, thanks to all of us and me for joining together. Thank you so much. Thank you.
From a developer, I think we have a developer committee. Any updates, Earl? Anything you want to speak on?
Well, you got the mic, Mr. Chair.
I've been talking all morning. I'm still getting comfortable with the mic. But yeah, in regards to the developer meeting that we had, it was a really good meeting. I think we had the first iteration of the cap and hand request for funds as well with the Finance Committee, which we talked about. And then, we just have some public-private potential partnerships coming available that we don't want to speak on in detail at the moment, but some pretty exciting opportunities to be able to collaborate with the transformation that we're doing in the downtown corridor. So, we're really excited to be able to get some of those partnerships to kind of align with the vision of downtown Norfolk and this transformation for our community. So, really excited about that. I don't think any other major updates that we had, Nathan, outside of that. I think those were the main ones in regards to that. And also, some of the, some of the things that we approved this morning, we talked about as well too in our meeting. But a really good meeting. I'm truly excited about the public-private partnerships as we talk about shutdowns and things of that nature, where, you know, sourcing other forms of income for the agency that'll be able to allow us to sustain if things may change for us from an economic perspective. So, very good meeting in regards to that. Are there any other committee meetings or anything of that nature?
I'd like to give one quick shout out to the Norfolk's finest, Norfolk Police Department, and the collaboration they have with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority through the Chew and Chat program. As I stated earlier, I was able to attend one last night. A few weeks ago, I attended, I think we've attended a couple in Calvert Square. They are, they're doing an outstanding job coming to our communities, meeting, going out, knocking on doors, meeting residents, asking questions about, do they feel safe? The Chief of Police was there on last night, and I think about maybe 15 police officers. I would like to see more participation, maybe, and I know it's difficult sometime, to get our more community residents out to these meetings because in the few that I've attended, we didn't have a great deal of the community participating. But I thank the efforts for the Norfolk Police Department and working with our communities and helping them to become more safer.
Thank you for that participation and comments, Commissioner Lewis. At this time, we'll have Commissioner comments. We can start with the roundtable with Commissioner Miller. Do you have any comments?
No additional comments here, David.
Okay. Earl, Commissioner Fred?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Acting Chair. Earlier in our meeting, we discussed, or at least we acknowledged, the service of our former Chair, Alfonso Albert. I don't know the number of years he was here exactly, but certainly it was a long-term tenure. I would hope that we would try to get some more formal recognition of his service, a plaque, or proclamation, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Something that could be acknowledged, Mr. ED, to recognize his service to the board. One other thing I did want to mention, I know we discussed earlier also our board packets. And I rather like our board packets. I'm not an avid reader necessarily, but as a real estate appraiser, I find out that an appraiser's best friend is information. And I'm sure that applies to many other disciplines as well. And so, while I support the effort to pare down where necessary and appropriate, let's not let our efforts to pare down reduce the comprehensive nature of the report. We still need the information. So, I would just ask that we keep that in mind. So, I don't like being in this posture where I'm saying, I like it both ways, so I'm very neutral. I don't like that too well, but I think we just need to look very, very objectively at what information is appropriate and necessary and timely, and if that means we pare it down or even expand it necessarily, it doesn't bother me. I would just hope that we can get an sufficient enough time that we have an adequate opportunity to review it before we get here. Most of us, some of us are still in the workaday world to some extent. So, the more time that we get to be able to review that information, I think the more effective we can be in these sessions. And I have something else, but as you get old, the brain cells dry up, so I'll yield back.
I also want to acknowledge the leadership and the service that Alfonso Albert provided to the board, also the mentorship and friendship that he provided to me during the course of the time when I first came on. And I agree, we need to, in some way, formally acknowledge his part... And I agree, we need to, in some way, formally acknowledge his contribution. Absolutely.
I don't want to take everyone else's time by saying, other than yes, and yes to both Commissioner Frayle and Commissioner Smith's comments about our former chair. I think it's very, very important that we do something.
Commissioner Chudzinski?
I don't have any comments.
And yes, to our Commissioner, Alfonso Albert, big shoes to fill, a great, you know, leader, and made a lot of contributions in his tenure. I would just like to suggest that as we move forward and getting things in place, that we remember that he started conversations with the commissioner, and we were, his goal was to go from community to community to talk with residents. And I think I attended one, and I look forward to us, you know, getting that flyer redone and continue the process of going out and meeting with the community, each community on a given basis.
Nothing for Ms. Mayo. For myself, I just want to kind of piggyback off of what everyone said in regards to our Chair, Albert Lewis. Thank you for the time, the tutelage, the mentorship. He's definitely been a wealth of knowledge and experience that definitely can't be replaced. He's been around, he's seen a lot, and he's definitely going to be someone that we still have to tap into in some different type of form and for guidance, you know, and wisdom. So just want to say thank you again for everything that he did for us. I think it's 12 years, to be specific, so, pretty long-term, you know? So definitely big shoes to fill.
I was only 10 then, when he started.
Yeah, right? You know, so, yeah, so thanks again, and that's all I have. With that being said, I don't think that we have anything else. I think we'll go ahead and we need to be taken out of a public session for closed session.
Yes. Resolution convening a closed meeting on October 16, 2025. Be it resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, to discuss the following matters, which are specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code sections referred to below. Number one, personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of employees of the authority, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. Number two, discussion and consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Act. And number three, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation and legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Act. May I have a motion, please?
Properly moved in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frayle?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Casa Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Mayo?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.